So it looks like we do have a quorum. I don't know if we're expecting to have an audience, so much of an audience tonight. But let's get started. Should we do a roll call of members to establish a quorum? All right, let me put everybody back on the thing. So I can call on people. All right. Let's start with Tyson not found. Chelsea, and I'm sorry, I forgot the other person's name. I usually, I honestly cheat off of the thing. The other new board member, what's your name? I forgot her name. I'm sorry, what is it? Amber, thank you. Let me make a note to myself. Amber, okay, so Amber and Chelsea are here. Laura? Here. Tricia, here. Vicki, here. Sorry, I'm such a visual person in Bench. Chelsea's there. Yay, thanks for changing the name of this screen. Thank you helpers. Okay. Did I already get Laura Swanson? Okay, then Monica McDaniel here. Okay, who am I missing? I'm missing.
Laurel.
Laurel, Laurel, right? Laurel. Yeah. Laurel. So she's just not here yet, right? We'll get, we'll get started without her because we already have a quorum, correct?
I'm not sure if she's coming anyways, Monica. She was a maybe, so.
Okay, okay, perfect. Then I think that we should, should move on. Does anyone want to recite the school verse?
I'll do that.
Thank you.
This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here, love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school.
Thank you. Okay, is there any? Are there any agenda modifications? Okay, hearing none. Are there any audience to address the council? I don't see anything. I don't see the participants. No hands up. Rachel, you have your eye on the hand, hands raised. Okay. So hearing none, we're going to move on to. So are we starting off with closed session? Are we missing something? I'm sorry, I don't have my agenda printed out.
Yes, we're starting with closed session.
Thank you. So give me a second to print my agenda. So the council will go into closed session and we will report out what happens when we, when we return.
Monica, you're muted, I think.
Blah, 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 blah. So I first asked if we need to reestablish a quorum, and then I just thought we didn't need to because we've, everybody's here. So to report out from closed session, I'm just going to report that no action was taken. And we'll be moving on to item 3.1, Governance, Strategic Plan Review and Update. And that is Susan Domenigini, please.
I'm not. Okay, so in the fall of, in 2019, we established a strategic plan with the work of the board and the community as to where we wanted to go over the next three years. Then, of course, COVID happened, which has taken us basically half of the, half of that full three years to be getting through. So we hadn't had a chance to really come back and review the strategic plan. And I wanted to, us to take a moment to do that as we're writing the LCAP, so that we could combine, if there are goals coming out of strategic plan that fit into the LCAP, we could do that. So I thank you all for for doing this work and being ready to be here tonight to review the strategic plan. We shared the full plan earlier this week and, of course, have posted it before. So what I've asked Alex to do, I pulled the document that just has the goals in it and and some summaries of what we have done so far on the goals. At, as of this time, we should be looking at the end of the second year, but we did not have the opportunity to do this for the first year either. So I have done some summaries on both the first year and second year, as well as some on the third year goals, because some work has been done on that. So. So any questions so far before I get started into spieling?
This is a Google document. Can we pull up the document or have we been given the, the link to this, or should we just hang tight right here with you guys?
I was just about to ask that. I can put it in the chat if you'd like to open it yourself.
I'd love to. Thank you. That way I can follow along at home. That was my only question, Susan. Anybody else have any? Okay, carry on.
Okay, so we start with a reminder of what our vision is, which is to be a mall of successful education of the whole child. And our mission, which is to nurture and deepen each child's academic and creative capacities using methods inspired by Waldorf education in a public school setting. So we established goals for the first year around each of the primary goals. So the first goal was to create a task force that will propose sustainable school design with a single track scenario and a double track scenario to be vetted through the appropriate channels on or before May 30th, 2020. So obviously, that did not happen. We did create or make the decision to use the Finance Committee as the task force for the sustainable school design. And so the Finance Committee did meet. We did look briefly at a single track scenario as well as our current double track scenario and realized that there is some work that needed to be done first. And so we focused on salary schedules and, and the new building as primary factors that we needed to establish prior to really being able to address single or double tracking. And I'll let Chelsea comment if she has anything further from a Finance Committee standpoint.
I think Susan, you really hit on it. When we started looking at the cost of either scenario, and we're talking a sustainable school design, one of the, the two largest components of a school's budget are the facility and the, and staffing. And so without having, without having updated the salary schedule, we can't, can't really do an analysis on what your staffing scenario costs. And then, you know, same thing, looking at what a building expense would be for the size of schools. So needing, needing those two components of information were absolutely essential for the commitment of anything else.
Okay, then goal two for any questions on that. Okay, then goal two was to create an in-reach, in and outreach task force that will determine the needs of further in-reach and outreach aligned with the mission and vision of Blue Oak Charter School, consisting of parents, community members, Waldorf certified teachers, staff, and perhaps two students. Approximately appropriately selected to assist by or before January 1st, in the in outreach task force, were reported to the designated administrator. So, and then a couple of sub-goals. For platforms to reach 1,000 people a month, to inform parents and identify the handouts, a handout with a five to 10 key points that will be used to inform and inspire students, parents, and community. So this one definitely was interrupted by COVID-19. We did not get the task force, any kind of a task force created on this. However, we have moved forward with some aspects of the goal. Contracting with MC2 to improve the outreach methods, that information. And once we went through that process of working on a better message, it seemed like the handout with a five to eight points was not as critical to inspire students and parents, but rather our, our better message that's been designed by our marketing. We have seen an increased use of Parent Square, and in fact, one of the fourth year goals we've established, that everyone be connected, you'll see later in the presentation. We currently have 100% of our families connecting with Parent Square. Then we've also worked on website improvements and continue to do, and continue to use Instagram and Facebook for posts. So even though we didn't really meet this goal specifically, we did do a lot of work towards improving our outreach in that area. Can you roll down a little bit, Alex? So our in-person outreach and a lot of that sort of outreach totally stopped during the pandemic. We have brought the conversation back up over the past month as, in fact, weeks. It's just coming back up as to how we should do in-person outreach, what, you know, should we go to the farmer's market, what fair should we attend, and so on. So that is back on the table to be discussed again now going forward because of the reopening of the community. That's what I have. Does anyone else who's here have any in-reach or other notes that they want, might want to put under this, this goal? Okay, I will move on. Goal three was to create a fundraising task force, apply for new grants, and so on. So fundraising just sort of didn't happen much under COVID. It's hard when people are struggling to pay their bills, and we're hearing so much about that, to be talking about. Gee, let's do some more fundraising. So it really didn't happen much. We can count, I think, some of the COVID money as new grant money, because that's what it is. And so that really has been an increase in funding that came to our rescue over this past year.
I was just gonna say, Susan, I think, I think although a task force wasn't created to apply for grants, I feel like you and the administrative team have certainly been on the lookout as well as Turner Impact. And really, I feel like we've applied for everything that's become available as far as, you know, the current, the current climate under COVID. And I know, just being in non-habit finance, I know right now grant money is really hard to come by, because a lot of the corporations that issue private grants have reduced or rescinded grants during COVID, being as, they don't know what their fiscal outlook's going to be and what's going to happen in the year. So we've seen a lot of that anyways. I feel like, because so many, so many corporate grants have been either, like I said, rescinded or only extended to those who have previously been receiving them. I think that we really, even if we had put together a task force, we likely wouldn't have made any more momentum than you've made just seeing now COVID's happened.
Thank you for that, Chelsea. I appreciate it. So that concludes the year one goals for the strategic plan. Now we are, of course, into this year. And what we, we had hoped to be doing now, again, finalizing the plan for sustainable school and developing a tradition, a transition plan. We have started on that as far as putting some of the pieces together, but we are not to the point of the final plan for that. And I would ask that we postpone the due date on this to December 31st, 2021, to give the Finance Committee some time to look at that. One of the things that was on the list to do for this is to begin talking about the potential of split looping, which would mean instead of going eight grades, we would look at either a split somewhere, either after fourth grade or after fifth grade, so we keep more of a lower grades loop and an upper grades loop. So we're starting that, and that discussion started a number of years ago, looking at middle school and, and thinking about students getting exposed to a wider variety of teaching styles and, and the deeper need for understanding of the curriculum in the upper grades. So the step we're in right now, based on input from staff, is to look at, to ask the experienced classroom teachers to respond to their thoughts on a split loop. And so that discussion item has begun, and we will have in the fall more information on that. Again, in-reach and outreach task force, really haven't done anything on this particular goal. We had presented that we wanted to have some regular school events, much like we had an art auction a few years ago. That sort of thing that we can really use as an event, both to fundraise and to to promote the school. And of course, that has not been realistic during COVID and has not happened. So finalizing the school building options by March, I feel really good about this one, because we're doing all right. That we're working now with Turner Impact and John Ross to find, to find your finance, a permanent home for Blue Oak, and negotiations for an extension of the lease are also underway. And then goal four, to plan and develop and implement a student behavior plan to assure that 100% of Blue Oak faculty will use the agreed upon rules and tools for behavior and support at at least 90% of the time before June 30th of 2021. Well, this has been an interesting one because behavior is, because we've had such, such a smaller amount of time on campus, and the children have just been so happy to be here. Really, behavior has been a very minor issue, or more often a minor issue than it has been in past years. So we haven't made, moved forward on this one. And what we are doing as we discuss the LCAP is really think about some positive changes as far as how to address behavior and so on, rather than focusing quite so much on the rules and so on for behavior. So we're really looking at how we can bring, improve our trauma-based practices, really looking at the positive behavior options that we want to focus on. So that we've been more in that direction than really on this particular issue in this way. So those are the four current goals. And so we'll go briefly into next year's goals. And then what I'd like to go back to is look at each of the areas of the charter and see what it, the strategic plan and see what it is, if we want to continue on with the goals as they are, or if there are some updates we want to do for next year. So. Roll me down to the last one. Okay, goal number one for next year, we have met. Blue Oak Charter School have 100% family utilization of at least one platform for communication by or before August 1st, 2021. So we have met that. And that, those are our numbers, today's numbers from Parent Square. So yay, let's, let's say yay.
I really want to commend the teachers on this because their willingness to switch from email to Parent Square, I think, is really what has pushed us to be so successful. I know in the past, it's been, if we want a whole school thing to go out, we've asked the teachers to send it, because everybody pays attention to stuff from their teachers. And so I know that really the teachers are such a driving force behind this, and their willingness to, to shift, to learn a new platform among everything else that they're working on, has been so pivotal in making this so successful. So thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, agreed. And then for goal two, to have a professional development staff-wide plan in place that will align with the Blue Oak Charter School's vision and mission and promote Waldorf education by or before June 30th of 2022. So we're currently in the process of assembling a team. We have three teachers who have volunteered and two support staff. I'm looking for one more from the representative, from the instructional aides to participate in the professional development plan. I think it's important that we talk about staff-wide, because training our front office staff, training our aides, training our faculty and training our admin are all important pieces of making sure we have a quality plan. So that is in process, and I believe we will have that done by June 30th of next year. And then goal three is stable enrollment. This goes right back to both the outreach plan and the sustainable school plan. It's going to be hard to, to be sure that we have stable enrollment by next year, but we definitely can move forward on this continuing as a goal. I think, because I think to determine that we have sustainable, a sustainable enrollment would take more than one year to do, and with the last two years being what they are, it's been tough. And then the final one is a rough draft of the charter renewal to be completed by June 30th, 2022. And we have not, though a lot of the work that we are currently doing with LCAP and other projects will feed into this rough draft. We have not started on the charter renewal document as of yet. So that is a report of where we are. Do you want to have any additions that they want to comment or add to our current plan? Or the, where we are in achieving the goals for this plan?
I just want to, so we had an outreach, in-reach outreach task force outlined of members who would be on it. I would still be interested in participating with that. So I just, one thing I wanted to say. And yeah. Because I'm interested in these goals, but I don't know if it's worthy to talk about the goals here, or just ask to be part of the task force, so I can talk about part of those goals there. Okay. Do we need to establish that? Or what, what do you think we need to do with this besides just going, okay, it's great, keep it? I see that, you know, that may be one thing. It looks like there's task force for different goals. Do we need to refresh any of that? Or what do you envision?
So I think, Alex, can you roll back up to the top? The first year. I think that's the easiest way for me to address that. I think we do have, for the first goal number one about the sustainable school, we've tasked the tasks, the Finance Committee with that work. And so I think determining if we still want to look at the items that we have as our goals here as for that sustainable school piece, I think if we want to say, do we want to continue this where we are? Or are there any changes to what we want to do for the sustainable school goal? That would be appropriate. And then we can move on to creating the in-reach outreach task force, which we are, of course, a little bit behind on. So we might want to look at that one. And then now establish the task force. We have had a small group doing the marketing, which you're aware of. But if we want, but we're now looking at something that might be more broader based, and so it may be more time to have this in-reach outreach task force developed. So that's for the first two goals. So my first question is, are we wanting to continue along the same lines with goal number one concerning the the sustainable school?
Susan, I think it's actually been more imperative now than it was when we started this discussion. I know the intention, as we were establishing this, was to be prepared financially to seek out a new school site, to be able to know what we can afford as we're in that process. So I think it's incredibly important to finish this work of this school one, so that we know kind of what our, what our threshold is within the budget to be able to expend as we're, as we're seeking out that opportunity. And I also still agree that the Finance Committee is the appropriate place to put our.
So it sounds kind of like it's still a go, it's still a go.
Okay, so staying along the same lines of what, we look at what we have within the goals and establish maybe a rewrite of how we're going to accomplish that, because, because of where we are with both the building and the other work that the group has already done. That sounds good to me.
And I think, Susan, I think, I feel like a lot of the initial work, I don't feel like we're that far behind. I mean, I know that seems weird, since we haven't done a ton of work specifically on that goal, but as we approach our next meeting, being a budget meeting, I think having some of these discussions simultaneously of of what, you know, a moving forward in a new place budget could look like at the same time, I think would be really easy to incorporate into those discussions.
Okay, all right. So continuing on the same lines with the, the task force for a sustainable school. Okay. Let's look at the in-reach outreach task force. Monica has suggested that we, we go back to this and go ahead now and establish that task force and be ready to move forward with that. Is that the, what the board is looking at? Agree, in agreement?
Since I'm new, can I get a little bit of maybe context of what, who would this task force be comprised of? I mean, I know a little bit of the goal, but it's a little bit broad. So, because I'm new and this is all very new, so I'm feeling a little lost.
Sure. So when we talk. Sure. So when we talk about in-reach and outreach, we're talking about how we present. Blue Oak to the larger community as a whole, both for just public relations, for donations. And for additional, and for new students. So how we present. That, are we talking about successes of the school and so on and outreach? And how are we recruiting new students has been a big part of it? So how are we actually having a plan to do that together in well? And then from in-reach, we know that. Retaining students that are currently here and families that are currently here. And retraining, retaining good relationships with the families and students. Is really one of the best ways to secure the success of the school in the long run. So wanting to do both in-reach. That is talking to our own community about. What's going well with the school and communicating that as well as reaching out to the broader base. Chico and Buc County communities as well. So the task force really to. To address that. And you know, we come, for example, I mentioned. Reestablishing the outreach as far as personal outreach. So we have different. Fairs and so forth. We've attended in the past and that takes. Support sometimes from parents, sometimes from staff. Ted, to do that on a Saturday afternoon or Saturday morning, if you want to go to the, the fair. And so how many of those are we going to do? How often? We can sit down in a room with three different people and come up with. 10 different fairs we might want to go to. But then how do we support that? Do we need to be looking at, you know, another thing is bling. We keep hearing. That we need to purchase or have more available. You know, blue oak t-shirts or stickers or whatever. And all of that work takes planning and time. And so those are the sorts of things we would be asking. Of the task force to help us design and to make sure that. We had a plan to do that kind of outreach and also to, to look at how are we communicating between classes in grade levels and all that as well. So it's. It's all of those pieces. It's kind of a big project. And so that's why I think the. The board previously and the group that designed the plan really went for, we need a group of people with a lot of different ideas to be able to come together to do that.
And Susan, if I, if I may, so this started the strategic plan. A group of us, and it was open to the, the school community and board members. Worked with a professional that draws the strategic plan. So these goals are super broad. So we identified them as. Action items that were needed over the next few years for our school. And so now, you know, and as you can see with this, is, you know, it's pretty broad as far as it being a task force that needs to address the things that Susan just said. And then the task force essentially would then drill down on those individual things, like how exact, what fairs do we go to? Right, right. So that's why it's so broad. But these goals overall were what were. Determined to be important for our school and then for our school long term.
Yeah, based on that strategic meeting. And that strategic meeting was like, I don't know, like four hours long or something on a Saturday morning. So it was a lot of work that we did, a lot of brainstorming. And that's where the, the non-involved professional came in because they took all that scratch and all that like. The general stuff we were saying, and they synthesized it down to this document that we're working on now. But that was a great way that you described it, Chelsea.
Yeah, that was very helpful. Thank you. Yeah. It's good to know where this document even came.
Yeah. Backstory first, actually. Sorry. A great question, Amber.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. And who, who is, or ideally would be on the task force? Is it going to be like? Board members? Is there, is that not really determined at this point?
Susan, who would ideally be on the task force?
So the list that we had is parents, community members. Waldorf certified teachers and staff and students. So pretty much representatives from all of the areas that. Are considered. In, in, in giving input into this because it's really about all of those different. Groups and how we can best communicate with all of them. So it's a pretty broad based committee task force.
I mean, it's gonna, I think. One of my things that I've noticed is that you don't have as much parent involvement. And that's, and then that's really dropped off. So I think I see where this is going to help a lot with that. And then. I've mentioned a few times, I think I just mentioned with Chelsea, like our online presence. Sort of that reputation management. So I can see how this is kind of all encompassing and that and so much more. But yeah, that's great.
Yeah, Amber, that parent involvement is so critical to make a school like ours fly. And. That's a huge piece of the in-reach portion of that, of that goal. So yeah, it's exactly, you're right on.
Brianna Lee has a question.
It's absolutely a question, and I don't know if this needs to really be anything. Specifically written, but I feel like the conversation is really highlighting. The need for these task force to encompass just like. I don't know what I would call like community rebuilding post COVID. Just a lot of how our community, both within the school and without the school, student community. Faculty community, parent community, all this kind of. Disappeared with COVID as was necessary. But I could really see these task force in the work that they're kind of generally doing. Maybe having a more immediate lens or just having as part of their lens. Sort of a component of rebuilding. Like COVID recovery, community COVID recovery.
Yeah, for having the first drive through Mayfair, you know, where we're not having any food together, you know? That's, that's a great point, Brianna. Some sort of healing opportunities. Yeah.
Yeah, because I think there's a bit of a notion for all of us that like. Magically things will be totally able to rebound to normal. And I think most likely we're probably going to need to look. At. You know, maybe a gradual phase in some things that. Change because they had to, and maybe we liked the change. Like the Mayfair was one where there was a lot of like, wow, it really worked for this event to have these things in different locations around the school. And like, could that be something we do? More and yeah, it, it's, you know, I have a feeling just expecting that we're going to jump right back into business as usual. It's probably not quite the reality, and we might want to be mindfully thinking of. How we're kind of rebuilding our communities, maybe as part of maybe the first, some of the earlier tasks for the task forces.
So do we need people to volunteer for the task force? Or how do you want to do that, Susan?
No, I just am in need of you saying, yes, we still want to move forward with this goal as it is. And I do like. What Brianna is talking about, and I think it applies to this one. Probably more than any of them that are really our goal and our thought upon what in-reach and outreach. Will be, has a lot to do with the recovery from COVID. So I really appreciate that. Thought as part of the plan.
Absolutely, me too.
Yeah.
I agree with that also, that this, that this goal is still incredibly important. And I love the context of. Like the, the rebuild after COVID and how this specifically, this will relate to communicating that message as the post. This stage of COVID is not post.
Um, Susan, have we heard back from MC2? Cause they had a thing where they were going to make us a thing or a package or something. Last I heard, did I miss the follow ups or something?
Okay, yes. So Alex and I met with Amanda from MC2 last Friday, I think it was. And we will be moving forward with Google or, or Facebook ads. And we should see those publicly within the next, by the end of this month. So, yeah, so the packages. We did approve the package. You may have missed that and we. And the plans are in place, so we're getting ready to move forward.
So that's good because I want to say that we didn't not do anything in this, in this task force. I mean, I think that was a thing that still happened.
No.
So, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
We still move forward. Yes.
Okay.
It's very different than I would have anticipated. Okay, so let's look at goal three here.
Sounds good.
Um, so this is fundraising. Another task force for fundraising and some specifics on fundraising. So I'm, I'm going to say from a management perspective, knowing, working with. Two, two task force really right now, I'm working with the finance committee and also the. Equity committee. It's hard to manage. I'm a little concerned in managing. Two new tasks for, task forces going forward. So I'm not sure if. Having a separate task force for fundraising from in-reach and outreach. Is going to be a manageable situation as far as really making progress. So. Feeling sort of maybe a different way of addressing the fundraising, other than bringing in. Another group of, of interested parties. It, it just becomes, I've struggled this year just with the two. So I'm making sure they're. Feeling supported and moving forward. So that would be my concern here. And I don't in plan for the equity task force to go away.
I, I think as this goal reads. I would, it would be my recommendation that this will be maintained. However, that the dates pushed out past are others, because I think for the. Well, with our current state where there is COVID funding coming in, having such a robust. Fundraising task force isn't necessary in the immediate term. And I think that the in-reach outreach task force. Would be the ideal place to do some of the more core. Events that also act as smaller fundraisers. That, you know, because that was when we, and for those who weren't present, when these task forces were established. It was with the recognition that the fundraising task force and the in-reach outreach task force are closely related. But should be separated because. A task force that's goal is to communicate the message of the school and to reach the community with the school's message and bring people in. And bring people together within the school and bring people in from outside. Is different than the people who should be looking for fundraising opportunities and raising money. Although some of those events will. Overlap and be done together. That's why the two task forces were. Identified separately. However, I feel like right now with the current state of our school and our financial resources. And moving forward with the in-reach outreach and maintaining the goal for the fundraising task force, but pushing the dates to be. Kind of to fall after some of the other things going on. Because in, in my view, it's not such an immediate priority, but it's still. I, I feel like it still is a priority, and I think it's still relevant even as it's stated, just not immediately.
Yeah, I agree 100%. You, again, really well stated and more thoroughly than I would have done it. I was just gonna say, let's just move the date. But yeah. Well, good background, Chelsea. Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree with Chelsea that changing the day, maybe even pushing it two years out or something. I don't know if that's too far.
So moving it, I mean, two years out, 2022 is really only one year from now. So if we want to push it out to say into 30th, 2022, I think that's.
Seems to me it would be prudent to do, to take, to re-establish this after the. The charter, the charter's renewal.
Okay, so that would be, yeah.
At least, yeah, at least after that, because it's just, that's going to take all your energy in 2022.
And I was gonna say, I, I was gonna agree with Monica. I mean, not specifically tie it to charter renewal, but I mean, we're in 2021. And so to push this goal just to 2022, I think it's still not that relevant, even in that immediate. I mean, we're talking. Within the next year. So that still would make it a current goal. And so I, I think even. I, I think even pushing it two years out from now, when we're then looking at. Being in a different position. Location and structure and all of that, having those other things kind of nailed down first before we focus on the larger. Fundraising applications.
Yeah, I agree. Other board members have opinions?
I guess that would be like 2023 would be the year to start this whole, in my opinion.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, this is Tricia. I would, I would agree. So I think 2022 is around the corner, so.
Yeah.
I have two questions. Susan, would pushing it out to 2023? Give you enough time? Like, does that address your initial concern about being spread too thinly with the number of task forces you're on?
So to put it in the 23, 24 school year. Yeah, um, so if it, in the 22, 23 school year. If we are able to get. A good focus next year on the charter renewal so that that June. Goal is, is done well. So we have more than just a general rough draft, but a really good solid draft. Then I can see in 23, in that year, 22, 23 of being able to refocus to do fundraising at that point. So yes, 22, 23 will be a good year to focus on the fundraising, assuming all the other goals go well.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure that that was addressed.
Yeah, thank you. You, I had to think that one through. So I appreciate you asking. Yeah.
And then the other question I have is. It's not, it's not like fundraising won't be happening in that window, right? This goal is specifically referring to creating a task force to look at that. Is my understanding correct about that? Yeah, okay. I, I, yeah, that's what I figured. I feel also very okay with pushing it. Down the road a couple of years.
Yeah, Susan, after your talk, you're mentioning 22, 23 to start working on this. It was actually my recommendation that it would be the 23, 24 school year. Establish the task force in, at the 2020, the beginning of the 2023, 24 school year and have it, that. Task force complete the goals by the end of that school year. So essentially even like. So right now it's what, 2021, so the 21, 22 school year and the 22, 23 school year, those would focus on the other goals and the. Shifts and the, you know, the world that we'll be in in those. Two years and then actually having this fundraising task force really be. The priority in 23, 24 school year. That's, that's my recommendation. I don't know how the felt, my fellow board members feel about that, but just to clarify, my recommendation was not to be, to have this goal completed by June of 2023. But actually like establish the task force then and have the. but actually like establish the task force then and have the goal completed by June of 2024. Because this is, and we discussed this in the strategic planning meeting, this is a very hefty goal. And having tied it to that goal, multiple grant applications and some larger projects, I think having a year to focus on that, that is post these other monumental things that we're looking at in the upcoming one to two years, that, that having this delayed a year. And, and like, and like Laura said, you know, this isn't to say that we shouldn't do fundraising until then. But this four really specifically discussed and focused on the bigger fundraising efforts of larger grants, of seeking out corporate partnerships and ongoing larger supports and not as much of the craft fairs and May fairs and the smaller things where the fundraising happens, but isn't like the big picture.
Right, I agree, Chelsea, because, you know, I, I like, like you said, I like the goal the way it's written. Creating a fundraising task force that will apply, apply to at least five new grant or donation opportunities. That's a lot of work and you're going to need a team of people who are interested. And I, my feeling is that within the next few years, as our school evolves the way we're hoping it's going to evolve, you know, that we're going to need that time, first of all, like Brianna said, to rebuild the community. But then what can emerge from that is a task force. If we keep it on our, our radar, but give it out far enough, it can be a goal that we look forward to after that solid draft is done. Because like, that solid draft is still not the finished, complete, completed draft in June of 2022. You know, so I still think a little bit more time, like 23, 24, I agree.
And that also gives us two school years to, to really formulate a strong community message and presence through the in-reach outreach task force, a better face to put forward as we apply for these bigger grants, and kind of a different mark in the community and a different taste in people's mouths. And, and so I feel like giving it the, the energy versus just checking the box and saying, okay, we'll apply for some things. And instead, like Monica said, you know, getting it hard and really kind of having established the groundwork through the in-reach outreach and through the messaging of this school and then broadcasting that to a wider audience and looking at the bigger funding opportunity. Now that I want to punt it, like, punt it down the road, so we don't.
Right.
Now, but I think, I think rushing it and doing it too soon really then just drives us to check the box and go, oh, here's like five things, we could just apply more real quick. And yeah, that's, you might get five, $500 grants, but in the grand scheme of things, like, that money doesn't go very far. And then you're kind of shortchanging yourself, because when you represent, when you put your face out there when it's not quite finished, it's like kind of going out with makeup half on, you know, it's, yeah, you, you've been seen, but then the next year, if you're more polished, you could go to that same corporation and present a better face and a fresh face versus kind of putting it out there too soon and then having, oh, yeah, yeah, I've heard of, I've heard of you guys, ah, it's okay. And then not getting the full second look. That's.
Plus, like you said at the beginning of the meeting, Chelsea, that corporations that are stretched thin from other donations hopefully will recover enough by then to be more philanthropic for new, for new avenues.
Yeah, and I, and I definitely think, you know, like I said, and we've all said, you know, not to stop seeking out opportunities. You know, if grants arise, and Susan, I know you're really good at keeping an eye out for this. And I know we have some families in this school that have ties that have, you know, put forward and and brought up opportunities for grants. And I definitely think we should continue to explore those. I just feel like this goal is meant to be a bigger, harder hitting, not just keeping an eye out for opportunities, but, but making opportunities.
Right.
I just, I just from listening in, I think it might stretch us a little too thin, too, because we're already talking about getting parent involvement, getting cool a little bit back to normal. And then, you know, and slowly introducing that. And then we're going to just kind of throw a lot of task force that, you know, might be hard to receive. And, and we might want to listen to the same people that always volunteer and sort of broadening that out and figuring out who in our community would actually fit best. Because fundraising is a tough one, it's a really specific skill to, to be able to do that in grants, too. So I agree with Chelsea that I think it'll be better if we do it later, because we'll have a lot more time and resources and to work on it and then put forth effort. And we're always, I mean, there's always fundraising, because if you, if you go over into parent council, they're always fundraising. They're awesome like that. So, you know, that never stops, I, I don't see that stopping.
Okay, that works for me. I'd like to roll down to the, we pretty much hit sustainable school plan, so I'm good with that. Let's roll down to the next goal two for in-reach outreach task force. So this, as you're talking about the fundraising, I look at this sort of along the same lines. This is, we recommended to, we were looking for two ongoing events to, to add to the school calendar to improve engagement of all stakeholders. And I know this is a really loved idea, I'm also questioning the, how maybe one's enough for now and make sure we have one nice one going forward. And then see if we want to add another one. I'm just suggesting maybe stretching it out a little bit might be better, unless somebody has some ideas for what those kind of events that they were thinking of when we wrote this.
And I, if I remember correctly, I think we identified it as two. Especially because we have in and outreach, so like the Mayfair already being established is really like an event that, that would check this box. And so a big part of that was also inviting the media and bringing attention to that. And so I don't necessarily think that two is off the table. I think a, as far as a recommendation, because obviously not everything's open back up, but some discussion, because we've done some great ones, like the, the art auction at Monca. We've had Christmas stuff here or winter festivals. We've had, we, and I, so I think we have enough that, and the way this goal is written and that kind of the way our discussion was, if I remember, it's not necessarily start executing them, but it's identify kind of what two signature events could be for us and doing a little bit more fine tuning and discussing how we could better promote those. And so I don't, not to stretch ourselves too thin, but I don't think that, I don't think that two's too many, because, because we don't have to execute them immediately. We might decide that we have two that we'd like to make our goal for ongoing and one that we're going to actually execute in the coming year and then execute to the following year or however that the task force decides that could roll out. But yeah, I don't, I, I think two is good, especially because we have so many seasonal things that we've got Harvest Festival, Mayfair, winter stuff. We've got, you know, we've had art shows, just kind of playing off even what events we've already had and deciding what's going to be more advertised.
Right, and I, I, when you mentioned, reminded us of the art auction a few years ago. So one thing about that is that was offsite and it was more adult. It was the, the first time that Blue Oak had an adult sort of an event like that. And so it was really precedent setting for that reason alone. And I would really be interested in supporting that in particular, you know. So don't, I, I agree with Chelsea, I don't think two's too many. I think that, you know, I mean, yeah, I think that, I think two is a good goal.
And, but Susan, I do agree that two, I think is too many to execute immediately. I think identifying them and beginning those discussions, identifying them is the first step. So I, I don't think that leaving it at two makes it so we have to execute two. Because I, I do absolutely agree that it's, we've got a lot going on to actually put two events in the immediate.
So in listening to your conversation and then reading Brianna's note about really the need to rebuild and, and potentially reinvent some of the events that we currently have, like the Mayfair Fair and Harvest Festival, the Christmas, the walking into winter and really taking a look at those as well as a, and I would say probably one signature event such as the art auction we did, that's more of an adult event that reflects Blue Oak. I think that's doable, but the understanding that the work to really rebuild what we, we have done in a better and stronger way. It, you know, there's, there are pieces of that that are happening. Talking about expanding our diversity in our Mayfair, for example. You might have noticed the flyers that went out talking about spring celebrations throughout the world. So we have those types of things that are going on that are also connected to our events. So I think if we understand that a rebuild of what we're already doing and the expansion of what we do is included in this goal, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I want to play out that Brianna's hand is raised and Buck's is as well.
I was just going to say that, yeah.
Yeah, Susan said it a bit, but I thought I would just expand on that as someone who's been involved in so many events for the school and in planning of a lot of them. Again, we're going to be really rebuilding a lot of the events that we've done, pretty much from the ground up. And I think that does provide us an opportunity to evaluate, you know, the need for an adult outreach event, which was really what the art auction came from, which was really grew, an arm that grew out of the eighth grade, the adult like ball that we were doing, which was a popular event, but was becoming really unsustainable for a new class to take on every year. I just, I would just maybe want to either have as a note under this goal or a wording in this goal, that I do think a high priority here is going to be kind of the mindful rebuilding of the events we have and maybe looking at those exist, before we think of new events, looking at, and I think this was some of the discussion when we established the goal, was looking at our existing events and how can those be more outreach and stakeholder events? Things like the board and our donors coming to the Mayfair and the Harvest Festival, you know, box seats at the winter concert, do we broadcast our winter concert? Like, you know, there was some things around our events that were sort of just beginning to take shape. You know, we had a really lovely winter concert at the PVA Art Center right before COVID hit. You know, we should really like kind of stepped up our game for what we were doing. And yeah, looking at our, you know, we've been talking for years about looking at our Mayfair and our Harvest Festival. And yeah, I was on the committee for the art thing and it was really incredible, but that was heavily driven by two parents who left like the next year. And that's kind of the crux of these bigger outreach events. Like I know my aunt's, my cousin's school hosted a huge version of the ball every year that would net them like $150,000 a year, they're in Sasso County, so money. But they, you know, they had an established team that stayed with the event regardless. And that had been kind of a crux for us, is like our events were often reflective of whoever was kind of at the helm at the time. So I think that's a big plan, rather than like, oh, we want to do this event or, oh, we could do this event. It's like, what really is the infrastructure we need to have these events sustained? So like, the parent council owns, kind of owns the rights to plan the Harvest Festival and the Mayfair with teacher input. You know, these, these bigger events where we go out, like they, they kind of need an infrastructure for how they're going to develop over time. Because, yeah, I watched the, the Blue Oak Ball kind of rise and fall every year, depending on whoever took it on. And that really has potential in town to be a big event for us. It really does bring in more than just ourselves and we're really good at hosting events for ourselves. But yeah, I guess my caveat to this is just mindful to growing our own events and really looking carefully at our own events before we add more on.
Yeah, and you know, that's a point well taken before we call him Buck, Brianna, because, yeah, I remember the rise and fall of the eighth grade balls, you know? And one year was really good, but then the next teacher, it depended on how much energy they had or, you know, or, or the parent participation or whatever for that year versus other charter schools like that have the spring fling, where it's a whole separate thing and it becomes part of the infrastructure. And it's no one person, it's a ongoing, sustainable kind of a thing. And it always nets them a lot of money, because everyone looks forward to it. And speaking of which, when you try to get donations for your charter school around the time of the spring fling, which I forget what other school is doing it, all the businesses are like, oh no, we're giving it a spring fling already. And so like, that's how well established it is. So that's part of the goal, I think, is to get something that's got that infrastructure and that longevity piece. And like you say, it's not the so-and-so show, you know, so Buck.
You all hit almost every point I was going to bring up, so good job. Good night, no, that's it. I was going to say, a lot of what I want to say, Brian Lee said, and then to add to that, the art for the heart was big, but it was an event for ourselves, pretty much. There were very few outsiders that came in, so there wasn't a lot of outreach on that. That was huge also, and that took a ton of effort. I don't know, somehow or another I've been involved in a lot of those and I remember many of them taking huge amount of effort on everyone's part to do it. And, and the payoff was good, but it needs to be, I feel better, we're not doing the, we're not doing it for free, we're doing it to raise money. And so I think the biggest bang for your buck needs to be taken into consideration, what we can put, what the event is, what it, what entails to put forth the least amount of money to get the biggest return on. That's basic business stuff that I think we need to consider more. Some are fine, but there needs to be some decisions made to, to kind of curtail the excessive spending. So if we have to raise that much more money, which cuts into our overall profit. That's about it, so yeah, good job everyone, you guys nailed all the thoughts already, pretty much.
Thanks Buck. I just want to say one more, one more quick real thing, real quick, Chelsea, and I'll go back to you, because I don't want to lose it, because Brianna said it briefly and I think it's humongous. She said, she said the eighth grade ball was something we put on for ourselves. And basically, when you're thinking about fundraising event, you look at like events that, that attract our own community and that we all like buy drinks for or buy a silk cape from or whatever. But the one trick that needs to happen around something like this is the consideration of getting money from outside of our school. So it's not our parents, not our usual suspects, not our people who always show up to charter, or parent council, you know, that it's people beyond that, that it's a cool enough event or something that attracts the grandparents or the aunt and uncle, you know, or whatever. So we're getting money from outside of the school. So that's just a little tweak that she said, I just didn't want to lose it. Sorry, Chelsea, go ahead.
Oh, it's okay, I was going to say, one of the things to be really mindful of and one of the things that was really big in our discussion in our strategic plan meeting was separating the in-reach outreach events from the fundraising task force. And so really, the intention of this portion of this goal was not to focus on two fundraising events, but two events that we could really invite the media to or have the community be a part of. So it's not necessarily, and I would say we should be away from having this goal be focused on fundraising. But I absolutely agree with Brianna in the fact that we do a lot of reinventing every year. And I think the intention of this goal, as it was discussed, was to, to decide on two events that are going to be kind of annual events, regardless of what class is there, regardless of, you know, any of those things. And it was about presenting those two events and generating an infrastructure around those so that year after year, they could be replicated without it being so dependent on which parents were the eighth grade class or which, who's, who had a different idea for that year. And those would be kind of more the outside events. um, outside events, but having two events that we look at as more of a signature event with the intention of outreach and media involvement and not um, with a specific intention of fundraising. Not that the event shouldn't pay for itself, but needing to separate fundraising from outreach. Um, we do so often look at how can we raise a lot of money? But then we're also looking at how can we reach a lot of people and, um, the discussion around this strategic planning meeting was the separation of those two and having this goal specifically be, um, two ongoing events that were very much a presentation of our school, or we can invite the media and outside, um, community to showcase the school. And so I think that's a really important differentiation as to why we're kind of tabling some of the bigger fundraising stuff like the task force, the fundraising task force and those efforts and really focusing on the in-reach outreach of this goal and needing to be mindful and separate those two to an extent. Um, I would just like to add, I mean, just because I've kind of been on, on all sides and I think, um, what a lot, a lot of this is getting at is we need to pick the events and outline how we want those events, like clear outlines and just being off and on a little bit on the parent council and seeing them do those events, I know that would be extremely helpful to them. Because every time they go in, the events are sometimes based off of who can just do what. Instead of having the structure already there and then just doling out who does what, that would make it so much easier because these events like to Buck's point take a massive amount to plan and to strategically put together. And it does always kind of fall on a few of those really great volunteers that just are willing to do it. And it winds up being the ones that are on parent council or already donating their time there. So really kind of, I feel like a lot of these goals are attached because the more involvement we have, the more outreach we do. And with these events, we'll have more people involved in it, but having that outline and that structure, what's the goal? What, what specifically do we want? And, and also a lot of times there's confusion about what's the role of the class in an event? And are they fundraising or are they, you know, what they're doing? And then what's the role of the parent council? So I know if we outline that for them, it would be a lot easier. And I mean, I love Mayfair. That's probably one of my favorite, um, the, the other event would like the Harvest Festival. It's really early in the year. So that was a tough one unless you're planning in the summer. Um, you know, to be that event, but if we did, it was right in the year, it would be something fun and great weather to do. But that was a tough one because it's, you know, I know it always sneaks up on the parent council to get that going. Um, but yeah, just that rule structured plan for them, you know, would be helpful because it's really winds up being who can do what.
Any other comments about this, um, uh, goal? And do we need to do any, yeah?
Buck has his hand up again.
Buck, go ahead. Thanks Rachel.
Hey, great points, Amber. Uh, definitely. Uh, those should be considered immensely. I think those are, are awesome. Of everything that's been said. I mean, not downplaying anything else, but those are uh, really good points. The strategic plan for each fundraising event. And as, um, Chelsea said, differentiate between what we're, we're doing, going out and trying to present Blue Oak or is it a fundraiser? And then what the classes are doing, who's involved, whose fundraiser is it or why? And defining each grade and each uh, kind of, uh, role, who's, whose role is doing what? That's, those are excellent points. I think those should be adhered to, um, uh, immensely because there is, it's kind of lost in the, in the play of who is doing what, why are we doing this? And what event is this? Who's it for? And are we trying, like Chelsea was saying, are we trying to showcase Blue Oak? Are we trying to raise money? So those are all, you guys are on the right track with that. So it's all good thoughts. Um, and, uh, not that you need my approval, but I, I think that's a really good line of thought for everything. And on that, lights out.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah. So I think somebody asked about if we need to move. So I'm, my feeling as the conversation moves forward is that, um, we kind of come to some general conclusions, which we are, I can hear that. And then for our meeting next week, I present a, here's an updated strategic plan based on this meeting. And then we can have an actual board, um, going through the information that we've shared tonight and do some, um, you know, approval from that standpoint. So, um, cause I, I think, yeah, so. So that's what I would like to do is just be able to take the information you're sharing and then summarize it for a updated strategic plan for next Tuesday.
Okay. Do you feel like you need any more input from the other items that are on this plan?
Um, I do, um, the, the last one that I would like to look at is goal four here about the student behavior. That goal, the only other one we haven't addressed is the, uh, charter renewal, which is pretty cut and dried. You know, yeah, we gotta get that done. So, um, that I don't think needs any adjusting, but, um, how to look at this one um, in terms of, of our trauma-based work in this last year and some of the changes that we've seen in our community through, um, COVID and the pandemic.
Vicki, did you have a question or comment?
No, no, I mean, I was gonna comment that I, um, I appreciated the discussion we had about the in-reach outreach and agree that we should focus on a couple of events and make those are, are the best they can be. But, um, go ahead.
So, um, goal four, plan, develop and implement a student behavior plan to assure that a hundred percent of the Blue Oak faculty and staff will use the agreed upon rules and tools for behavior and support at least ninety percent of the time by or before June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. How do you feel we are doing on that goal as this point, considering it's coming up in about a month?
Um, so you know, as I've said before, a lot of the work around behavior planning has almost been on hold because of the limited amount of time that students have been on campus. And literally I think we went from eighty level threes last year to like three this year. It's simply because the environment is so different. So.
Kids are like, don't send me home. Don't send me home. I don't want to be home.
Yeah, I'm happy to be here. I'll do whatever you tell me to do. You know, now our middle schoolers, well, they're having, they had a, you know, some, some interesting weeks, Alaska. But, um,
It's a middle school. What are you gonna do?
It's middle school. That's what I said. Yeah. Well, middle school's here. Um, but it's, it's almost as though we need to really relook at a lot of things through the, the lens of, of what we've learned about trauma-informed, um, schools. So, um, uh, so I'd almost like to say that some of the social emotional learning work that we're talking about in the um, L cap would better fit this one. But I'm not sure the people that really, um, as I look at who's here, I'm not sure the people that, um, had a, had a stake in this goal are here to speak to it. So, I'm, I'm sort of, I, I feel like I need to address it, but I'm also sort of concerned to make sure that I'm, you know, that we're representing the input correctly.
Susan, I'm curious, um, I have heard super exciting things about a new S E L curriculum that's coming into place. And I'm wondering how much of that, like the restorative justice aspects and the trauma-informed aspects would apply to this. And then kind of in that same vein, if it's something that we could consult with, the school psychologist or school counselor, or if this is something that somebody like that might have a little bit more to weigh in on.
Yeah. And so I'm sort of feeling like we may not have the right people in the room right now to address this goal.
Brianna Lee has her hand up.
Yeah, I was actually gonna say that I feel like this goal's not, I mean, I feel like the weird lull we've been in this year where like the kids are really struggling, but we're weirdly having like less behavior issues because I think they're just like traumatizable, shell shocked being still something happens. And then you're like, whoa, um, I just feel like we're at a real crossroads about how we're going to be handling behavior moving forward. We are going to be in a real trauma recovery place. And yeah, we have really exciting curriculum for addressing kind of the emotional wellbeing of our kids across the board. Like I, I agree with Susan, like really addressing what we have and need to do with this goal. Not only are the stakeholders not here, I think we're just in this weird I don't know, lull breach, if you will. I think we're going to really have to look at how the children are when we start getting back to more full-time school in the fall. And I think really looking at our S E L curriculum and how that's going to inform our discipline response. I think I would propose maybe re, just pushing out a date, a year or at least for reevaluating this goal and what we want to do with it. And I think it's hard to even, even without stakeholders. Here, I just think it's hard for us to really, we can't really use this year and a half as a metric for much of anything. And we're going to be looking at a very different world in terms of how we want to deal with behavior and the kind of behavior we're dealing with, um, coming back in the fall. So yeah, my thought would be just push this out a year to be reevaluated after a year of full-time in-person instruction. And a year of our S E L curriculum, which is very exciting.
I feel like I, I'd like to just agree with what you said, Brianna. I think it's, we don't really know what kids' responses are going to be like when we're back more full-time. And while I think it could be really important to be proactive about that and have a plan for what might happen, I think it's impossible to really predict what the needs of the students will be and what kind of behaviors you'll see. Um, and I do feel like it's not like the school is like, we're, uh, not thinking about how to handle that kind of thing. I think the S E L program, I know it doesn't specifically address this goal, but I think it's, um, an important piece of this. Like there is work, it sounds like being done around this. Um, even if we push this goal off a bit, if that makes sense.
My thought would be to maybe split it into two parts. And I feel like um, having some sort of infrastructure to, um, to have some consistency from class to class and across the campus on how, um, how situations are really being handled. Um, obviously with some flexibility for, um, there being unique situations coming out of trauma or still really being in trauma. Um, but I think having for, for the students to come in and also to, to have some things established um, as part of that, um, professional development happening in the coming months, you know, leading up to school, starting in the fall, um, having, having a, um, maybe a this, like I said, being a two-part, having a, a light version going into the fall school year so that there are some consistent, um, norms to start off with, um, and some expectations that are present. Um, I think would be very helpful both to students and teachers. And Brianna, please, um, correct me if that's, if that's not true, but I feel like having, um, not this expectation that will be all the way there and a more rigorous kind of plan of action in place, but having some infrastructure for the teachers to rely on to say, okay, here's, here are some things that we're going to focus on in the coming year. And they may be some trauma response items, like how are we gonna handle somebody who's overwhelmed and due to the trauma? Like, does that, is the teacher expected to handle that? Is that supposed to go? At what point does it then escalate out of the teacher and into a counselor? And maybe just some things that are, um, a little less specific to just discipline and more some, some guidance and outlines on how to like what that looks like and what the available resources are. And, and like I said, you know, well, I didn't say, yeah, but I thought, um, I'm sure that this is already stuff that's being worked on and that's being discussed at the staff level and, um, but maybe just kind of a more formal, um, outline of that so that kind of the teachers are all on the same page and we, um, behavior interventionist and counselor and administration team like it kind of has has a, a funnel, if you will, of how to, in those situations and, and what that looks like for, for a situation to go through the funnel. Um, and or reverse, I don't know, I guess here of who. Yeah. And just kind of some, some basic outline of that because obviously it is going to be a different year and it's not going to be normal, but there are still going to be disciplinary issues. And I think it's important to still have, um, have a, some sort of infrastructure to support both the teachers and the students to know what the expectations are and how to, how to start down that path. So maybe like I said, splitting it into two, so it's not the, it needs to be finalized before we go into school year next year. But say like phase one of having a light infrastructure and then refine that throughout the year as we know a little more about the, the students and their response to return to full-time. I'm, I'm kind of on the fence on this one. Um, because I also feel like there's still going to be a lot of changes that we're not sure how kids are going to react. Um, and one of the great things about Blue Oak, and I know this isn't the case for all kids, but the teachers really know the students. And, um, I know sometimes they have to sort of be flexible with how they are, you know, dealing with behavioral problems. And they tend to work a lot with the parents, which I love. Um, and I, I do, I mean, because part of me is not, um, the program we have now, the, the referrals and how that works, um, I do feel like it definitely needs work. Um, I'm not, you know, I, I definitely think we could do better on that. Um, but I do think that the teachers are already doing better on that. And specifically I have a teacher that I've worked with my son, and she's just a lot of, she made her own little positive reinforcements to go home with parents and get these little notes. When our kids just have a good day. It's not even about anything bad, just letting us know when they were a good helper that day or when they, and that, it's actually been very helpful with his behavior. We're not ever talking about bad. We're always talking about the good stuff. We're not even really talking about that. So it's not even really happening anymore. So I, so my point of this long rant is that I do feel like the teachers are kind of adjusting and that's gonna, I worry about putting it too structured. I, I know that's scary. This is a school, we need that. We do have something in place and the teachers are working within that. And I just feel like there's a bit, there's going to be more coming, more changes and more things and, um, and even going back to that normal is going to be a change. So I just worry about tackling it too much now with all the info.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Uh, Vicki, and then I have a question.
Oh my gosh, it was so long ago. Um, I, um, I think that COVID just derailed this plan. And we should of course allow another year to implement it. And I would like to hear more about the S E L curriculum.
And my question is, before you answer, about the SEL curriculum, because I was curious about that too. I wanted to ask you, Susan, what was the impetus for adding this? I was wondering, it says, it, it developed a student behavior plan to assure that everybody is, is, is using agreed-upon rules and tools for behavior. So I'm wondering if this is, if there, you know, because this hap, we, we developed this like a year or two ago, right? So I'm wondering if at that time, the concern was there wasn't consistency among the various aspects of the school? And if that's what this is about, more than just trying to change how teachers tackle behavior? So I'm just wondering, like, what is this goal really about? And so we can kind of consider where it best fits in, especially considering that so much has changed since the goal was implemented.
Um, I, I think you've, you're spot on, Monica. I think the focus is, was consistency so that, you know, we have, of course, the values and so forth that we have established. We have processes that we've used. But the feeling that one teacher was doing it and maybe this other staff were supporting it or whatever, that sense of have we really come together as a community around how we deal with behavior? I think that would be how I would, would term this. And, and in putting this forward as one to question, and I do like the idea of possibly just saying, let's reevaluate this next year. Is that with all we've learned and all we have done this year with really thinking about how different things affect students, family, environments, depression, anxiety, all of the things that, that we know affects students, we're really thinking very differently. So if we were to write this goal today, it might be a very different, written an entirely different way. And then next year, if we look at it again, it might be different again as we have more experience. So it's just a really hard time one right now with what we've just gone through to ask, you know, to ask for something formal like what we were asking for two years ago.
And I think I'm gonna redirect my question to Brianna and give her a chance. So she's typing some cool stuff into the chat, I'd rather hear from her. So we're all on the same page. So Brianna, my, I, I would direct, redirect this question I just had to, like, was it where some teachers were doing like nurtured heart and other teachers were doing like something else? And therefore, there was no consistency? I mean, is that what was going on that, that you noticed kind of thing or, or, you know?
Yeah, I would say so. I think this goal more reflected just that our school was kind of in a state of trying to better formalize our behavior response, which I don't think that that ceases to be a goal. I think if anything, that becomes even more important of a part of the goal. But I think this was really more reflective of the fact that there still seems to be confusion on implementation, school-wide, not necessarily that like there wasn't rules, but that like was the yard duty consistently enforcing the rules? Was the teacher consistently, you know, and, and like, by enforcing the rules, I mean, that also encompasses like creating the culture.
Yeah.
For helping classrooms and things like that. You know, we have talked some about, you know, bringing more nurtured heart training back to the faculty. I think my biggest thing is just, I don't think, I really don't think we can make a real goal based on anything right now on this because we've been 15 months out of anything resembling even really using our own existing behavior plan much. Like, I feel like the situations I've had with students, the situations I've heard about are like, we're having much less of the lower level things. I think we're all just kind of surviving. And then like these big incidences that sort of supersede our plan anyway, that are more indicative of just what's kind of going on with everybody right now. And I, yeah, I feel like if, you know, a goal is a goal, we can always reevaluate it if it doesn't work. But I feel like we're gonna be better able to measure how our behavior plan is working after we have a year of actually using our behavior plan. Again, we were kind of just starting to really get it in a better place before COVID hit. Where like our referrals were becoming more consistent, the understanding of how to use the process was becoming more consistent, like.
Right, right.
And then, yeah, it's just, it's, I don't know, I feel like it's like everything in school right now. It's like, okay, there's what I kind of want to go back to, but through this total lens of who knows exactly how that's going to look? And yeah, I would just really hesitate that we change what we were doing until we have a chance to really see how it works where we are now. And again, fold in some of the components. I think the intention is that some of the components of the SEL program that our counselor is in the stages of piloting or proposing a pilot of, that might fold over some of it as well.
Right. And that's what I wanted to ask you, because you, you put in the chat, we'll be piloting, piloting your SEL program. So can you just talk, share a little bit about that and how that fits with this, with this goal?
Let me step in. Monica, I'd intended to have Emma Todd come and talk to the board next, and the meeting on Tuesday. So I, I would want you to hear it from her.
Please, I concur completely. Do not, do not ask me to try to speak. She's got an incredible.
Paraphrase, yeah.
Yeah, she has an incredible presentation. It's very comprehensive. I would not do it justice. And yeah, she sounds like she's on the docket to come and give you, and you can ask all kinds of questions.
So maybe adjusting this to like, just with language of, you know, this, you know, this is what's happened, you know? We didn't know there would be a pandemic. We didn't know people would have to stay. I don't know. I mean, I think, do you have enough direction for how to adjust this, this plan? Any other input from the board or?
I think I'm ready.
Week.
I, I think I have the information. I need to be able to update the plan and present it to you for next Tuesday. I think this is some really good discussion work.
Yeah, perfect. Anything, anyone else wants to add before we move off of this? Great. Thank you. Thank you for everybody's input. It's odd, it's, it's great to have a group process like this. So Susan, you mentioned that was the last one that you really wanted us to focus on. Is there anything else in this document that you want us to review before we close the meeting?
No, I think we've done an excellent job of covering the areas that needed to be updated.
Great, thank you. So we will adjourn, oh, we will adjourn our meeting till next Tuesday at 6:00 PM. I, I do have a meeting before that that goes until 6:45, so Vicki, you're on deck until I show up. Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. Any other closing comments? Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
All right. Bye, everybody.